Good morning and welcome to the Hawaii State Senate Committee on Commerce and Consumer Protection. This is our Friday, February 14th, 2025, 9:30 a.m. agenda in Conference Room 229. This meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. And in the unlikely event that we need to abruptly end this hearing due to technical difficulties or any other uncontemplated challenge, we will reconvene to address any outstanding business on Tuesday, February 18th, 2025, at 9:45 a.m. And a notice will be posted on the legislature's website, as is our custom in this 90-minute hearing. We observe a two-minute testimony time limit because we have received and reviewed all of the written testimony. So if you'd like to make comments, please come up. If you'd like to stand on your testimony and acknowledge that we've received it in written form, then please do so. First measure is SB 1137 relating to insurance, which requires insurers to notify policyholders of rate changes within 30 days of approval by the insurance commissioner and not less than 30 days before the effective date of the rate change. DCCA Insurance Division with comments online. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Jerry Bump, Acting Insurance Commissioner, will stand on our written testimony, providing comments and available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Gregory Masekian online in support. Good morning.
Morning. Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I am in support. I had some comments. And excuse me, I apologize. I was just trying to get prepared for this meeting. I'll be very here.
We do have your proposed changes while you're pulling it up, so.
Thank you. Okay. Yeah, my, the specific comment here is regarding condominium associations. There's a lot, as we know, with condominium issues going on for the past number of years, and they haven't been addressed. But the insurance issues that are basically spoken about quite often regarding condominium associations, there's two aspects to it. A lot of it has to do with deferred maintenance. So the insurance costs are going up, not just because the industry costs are going up. But I would appreciate if you carefully look and craft this with any amendments necessary to address condominium master insurance policies and all of the insurance that goes along with condominium associations, including the directors and officers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We also have written testimony in opposition by Namak. Frank Schultz in support, Lynn Matasal in support, and late testimony from Kele'ee O'Kolani Ka'au amo in support. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Members, questions? Vice Chair?
One follow-up question for Insurance Division. You know, many of the condominium associations have experienced considerable, I guess, impacts, you know, with late notices. And for many of those that are dealing with master policy issues involving their hurricane coverage, you know, 30 days is not really enough either in many instances in case they have to make changes or adjustments. So, you know, are there any other recommendations your division can come up with if you feel that the requirement could create significant operational challenges?
So my understanding of the bill, there's two components. One is the renewal notice, and the other is after the program has, you know, received a rate filing increase approval. And the operational challenges would be more so related to after the rate approval increase is, you know, approved. The issue with condominiums is, though, that their majority of them are getting their coverage, you know, packaged together, and they're getting it from a surplus lines insurer who wouldn't be subject to these requirements to begin with. So even if we tried to make it more stringent, it really isn't probably going to affect, you know, make an impact on the condominium master policy market. This would have an impact on all other types of insurance, whether it be auto insurance, or homeowners, or the individual condo owner owners, but not on the master policy. Unless the policy is, you know, completely written by an admitted carrier, it wouldn't apply anyways.
So for any, I guess, surplus line insurer, do we have any kind of regulatory control over the timing of their renewal or policy changes?
We don't.
Okay.
It's really that's, the surplus lines are there as a backstop for availability. So the admitted market that we do have control over, you know, ideally, we would have enough admitted carriers who can provide this coverage. But because we don't, we allow surplus lines brokers to go out and procure insurance in the non-admitted market. If you try to start placing limitations on that market to some degree, then they may not want to actually write. And then now you have even further exasperated the availability of insurance in the Hawaii market, whether it be from the admitted or the non-admitted market.
Okay, well, I guess we will have to rely on the legislation to establish some sort of additional consumer protection assistance for your division. Thank you.
Thank you.
Members, any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to the next measure, SB 293 relating to real property transactions. This measure requires a seller or its agent in a residential real property transaction to disclose that the United States Postal Service cannot deliver mail or packages to the residential real property being offered for sale. Hawaii Realtors with comments?
Thank you for standing on comments.
Thank you for standing on your testimony. That's all the registered testimony we have on this measure. Is there anyone else who would like to comment on the bill? Members, questions? Next measure is SB 752 relating to insurance. This measure increases the notice period for an insurer to notify a policyholder of a cancellation or non-renewal of a property casualty insurance policy. Attorney General's Office with comments? Good morning.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. My name is Deputy Attorney General Andrew Kim. We have already provided our written comments regarding potential contractual impairment issues and retroactive application. I'll be available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have written testimony in opposition from Namak. Frank Schultz in support, Lynn Matasal in support, and an individual named Catherine with late testimony in support. Is there anyone else who'd like to testify? Members, questions? Next measure is SB 1575 relating to insurance. This measure allows authorized insurers in the state to offer building and hurricane damage insurance for condominium buildings at a lesser rate than the building's prior surplus lines insurance policy for the same coverage. DCCA with comments online.
Good morning again. We'll stand on our written testimony, providing comments. Thank you.
Very much. Gregory Masekian with comments online.
Good morning.
Thank you. Good morning. Again, Gregory Masekian here, testifying on this measure. And excuse me again, I'm just pulling things up on my computer. I've got a lot on my plate today. So I've just made some comments on this. And again, this is something where the condominium association that this would pertain to or the individual condominium associations, membership usually has a right to vote on certain things. I do believe that this, the way the language is crafted in this bill, that the membership would have input into allowing something, you know, with this language. I do realize that statute, state statute usually overrides the governing documents, which is intriguing because we always hear that condominium associations are self-governed. But this is something to be concerned about. So I would just ask that you take a look at that and possibly amend to include a requirement for review if a vote is required by the membership.
Thank you very much. Lynn Matasal in support. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Members, questions? Okay, if there are no questions, we'll move on. SB 1046 relating to condominiums requires any managing agent to notify each unit owner and the real estate commission when a condominium association that the agent manages fails to meet budget and replacement reserves reporting requirements. Real Estate Commission with comments online.
Good morning, Chair. Keo'akaloe, Vice Chair, committee members, Kiding Kleinhand's condo specialists, testifying on behalf of the Hawaii Real Estate Commission. Will stand on our written comments and available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. CAI in opposition. Morning.
Morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Senator Richards. My name is Phil Nerny. I am testifying. Richard Emery is in another matter. We're concerned that this would interfere with the principal agency contractual relationship between a managing agent and an association. I noticed for one thing that it also, in the actual language, says that the notice requirement would apply whenever the board fails to comply with this chapter, not section, which means that the managing agent, which is not typically an attorney, would need to make legal judgments on a regular basis, including where there are discretionary kind of decisions to be made. So operationally, I think it's very difficult. It would be corrosive of the principal agent relationship, and Senate Bill 253 would be preferable. Thank you.
Thank you. Hawaii Realtors in support.
Stand on my testimony, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nerny, we have you also in opposition. Thank you. Gregory Masekian with comments online.
Aloha again, Gregory Masekian on this measure. And again, I'm just pulling up my statement. I do want to read something from my comments. I think it's just important. I know my testimony was late on this, but I do want to read this. So the concern that I have with a lot of the condominium measures when we're discussing managing and I've seen a number of bills this year and in previous years, is what is the definition of the managing? And some believe that when you say managing agent, it's property manager or what's often referred to as the community manager. But in the context of what's codified within the statute and the way it's worded in the definition, the managing agent of the management companies is the broker or brokers of more than one, if principal broker and an additional broker. And these property managers and community managers are not licensed. So defining what managing agent is is very important. And, you know, when you look at HRS 514B-132, it's defined within there. I'd ask you all to please carefully look at this for this bill and all bills that you're looking to pass this year and in the future because in the past, it's been something that's come up time and time again. So thank you for that opportunity to make that comment.
Thank you. We have written testimony from the Poliho Townhouse Association in opposition. Ann Anderson in opposition, Lila Moore in support, Julie Wassel opposed, Lynn Matasal opposed, Prim Rosleyong Nakamoto opposed, Lance Fujisaki opposed, Laurie Sokach opposed, Paul Ireland Cofftenow opposed, and late testimony from Ray Ling Tano in support. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Members, questions? I have a question for the Real Estate Commission.
Morning, Chair.
Could you respond to Mr. Masekian's concern about the ambiguity of the definition of managing agent?
Well, anecdotally, we can confirm that branch staff does receive calls. The callers do express their concerns with their managing agent. And we do have to explain that the managing agent is the real estate broker and the entity that is contracted with the condominium association, whereas they have the particular concern for the individual assigned to the condominium association, which, you know, may have many titles and currently is unclear because they do not possess license at this time.
So would you be opposed to proposing a clarification to this definition? I guess, more specifically, are there any concerns that would come to mind if we would further clarify the definition?
Well, if the bill were to specify for the individuals, and it appears that maybe they would be subject to regulatory controls, then we would probably include in future testimony regarding sunrise analysis. But at the moment, as currently drafted, it is the real estate broker that would be reporting to the unit owners and the real estate commission, which would be doable, I think, thinking administratively how it would be done, is that the individual assigned would report to the managing agent, and the managing agent would provide the correspondence to the real estate commission that they did not meet their budgetary requirements.
I'm not sure if you're telling me you like it or you don't like it.
Oh, well, I don't believe we can make a recommendation on.
I guess because the point, the point I think the previous testifier was making is that it's confusing for, it's confusing for the condo unit owners to tell who's actually accountable. And so that's the question is, should we clarify that in the statute or not?
I guess it would be beneficial to define the individual assigned to the association, whether it be association manager, account manager, community association manager whatsoever. It's just that I think anything further where it starts to impose responsibilities, then it's, we would believe it would go more into sunrise territory, unless it's just simply a definition, just for clarity. But we would have to look at the bill language.
All right, depth, sonon. Thank you. Any other questions, members? Okay, we'll move on to the next measure. Which is SB 1050 relating to insurance. This measure allows captive insurance companies that are not risk retention captive insurance companies to apply to the insurance commissioner for certificates of exemption from examination after meeting certain requirements. Insurance Division, DCCA in opposition online.
Yep. Good morning again, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Jerry Bump, Acting Insurance Commissioner, will stand on our written testimony in opposition to this bill and available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Hawaii Captive Insurance Council in support. Good morning.
Morning, Chair Keo'akaloe, Madam Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Paul Shimamoto. I'm the president of the Hawaii Captive Insurance Council, a nonprofit organization that for 36 years has supported and continues to support nearly 300 actively licensed captive insurance companies in the state, all of whom contribute approximately $120 million a year to the state economy. Appreciate the opportunity to testify. We do stand on our written testimony, but I'd like to make just a couple of quick points. This bill is a well-balanced and forward-thinking approach to regulation. It acknowledges and rewards certain gold standard companies that have consistently adhered to regulatory requirements and have demonstrated sound financial management. Importantly, it will incentivize others to achieve the same. The requirement that companies must continue to file all necessary financial statements and other annual reports and must continue to comply with all relevant provisions of the laws and regulations means that our regulatory framework remains intact. Importantly, the provision does not allow for a relaxation of oversight but eliminates duplicative regulatory efforts, duplication that none of our licensees want or need, and duplication that our regulators should not have to endure. In doing so, the bill will allow our regulators to focus resources and personnel in critical areas, such as monitoring higher-risk, more complex entities and reducing a growing and problematic backlog with administrative and regulatory functions within the branch. Lastly, it strengthens Hawaii's competitive position in the global captive insurance market, one that is increasingly competitive with 39 other states actively engaged in business. By allowing gold standard companies to apply for exemption from exams, Hawaii will distinguish itself from other jurisdictions that impose rigid, continuous, and often expensive oversight. This will be a clear signal that Hawaii is open and friendly to business and efficiency. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Masekian online with comments?
Thank you, Chair. Again, Gregory Masekian. Yeah, I just wanted to make one comment on this. And again, my testimony was submitted late yesterday. So I noticed the number of years. So I would ask that you please amend SB 1050 to reduce the number of years an exemption may be allowed from five years to three years. So there's a Section G, and if you look at Section G, I'm just asking that you change that from five to three years. Thank you.
Thank you. We have written testimony from AIG Insurance Management Services in support, Alka'i Global Inc. in support, Paramount Insurance in support, Hawaii Captive Insurance Council, Brown &amp; Brown in support, late testimony from Pacific Risk Solutions in support, Martin King in support, and Jill Miura in support. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Members, questions?
Quick question, I guess, to you guys. Maybe Insurance Division, I don't know. I kind of agree with what Mr. Masekian is saying. I think I co-sponsored this one. I can't remember. But I had concerns with it last time around because of what the Insurance Division said, you know. But at the same time, you know, I understand what you guys are saying. Do you think there's some kind of a middle round, either through Mr. Masekian's amendment of three years or perhaps making insurance captives who are in this period of not being examined? In essence, if something happens and the Insurance Division investigates them, they would be open to UDAP or some kind of trouble damages or something. Would that be something, a way to try to create for your essence more business regulatory environment but still maintain some type of examination oversight?
Thank you for your question. I think with regard to the three versus the five years, the reason the five years is there is because for the types of companies that would be eligible for this exemption, that's what their current statutory schedule is, is five years. With regard to your other question about what if things go sideways within the five years and they're not being examined? The practical reality is, is that the way the statutes work for captives is captives have to, they're required, to get approval for basically everything they do along the way. So, and they're also, this bill does not exempt them from filing their current statutory financial statements. So the division will always have on an annual basis a picture of what the financial condition of these companies are, in addition to having all of these business plans and changes along the way, year over year, as they happen. So it's not really the case that they're going to operate under the radar, and nobody's going to know what they do, and nobody's going to know what condition they're in for five years. That's not the reality.
Because your annual filings, right?
Correct. They would still be in place, yes, sir.
Still in place. They can intercede at any time then, even though you have exemption from.
That is correct. That is correct. Thanks, Chair. Question?
Can you provide, I guess, some order of magnitude for some of the other states that currently have fairly large captive presence?
Yes. Yes, I can. Well, Vermont is the largest domicile. They probably have close to 700 actively licensed companies, so more than twice ours. They also have a very different and more robust, I would say, division that examines and monitors their captives. There are also other jurisdictions across the country that some of them don't even have any examination requirements at all, period. This is sort of in between, right? This is where the commissioner would have the ability to make a determination case by case, factual circumstances presented, to allow certain companies, not all, but probably certain companies that are deserving to get these exemptions.
Would it be more likely that Asia-Pacific or other international companies might select a location like Hawaii based upon its proximity or presence, you know, kind of remote from the rest of the United States? Or is that a disadvantage rather than an advantage?
Well, we definitely are an advantage. So Hawaii currently has 46 actively licensed companies with Japanese parent companies. That proximity and the cultural affinity with Japan are huge reasons why they're here. That said, with the US-based companies, we have companies that predominantly from the West Coast, again, for proximity reasons, but we also extend all the way across to the East Coast as well. Companies that are in the business of captive insurance are looking for business-friendly domiciles. Yes, proximity is important, but the strength and innovation of the domicile, really, I think, carries the day at the end.
Okay, thank you.
So do you think that next, sorry, Chair, do you think the next year we should take a serious look at setting up within the Insurance Division a captive division that would focus solely on working with you guys?
We have it. We have it existing already. And it has a deputy commissioner now, who's the administrator of the branch. And I believe they have approval for, I think, up to 13 or 14 examiners within just that branch alone. I'm not sure that they're completely staffed at the time, but I think that's roughly what they're allotted at the moment.
Because I was just gleaning from your earlier comments, it didn't seem like that was the case. More support for that would make the better business environment for captives, right?
The challenge we're having right now is, is right, as the domicile grows, thankfully, because we're almost at 300 now, we're getting more companies. But what we're not getting is, we're not, we're not, the Insurance Division's staff and capacity is not growing at the same rate that the licensees are. So you've got more exams every year because you've got more licensees coming in, but you have the same number of examiners with more and more things to do.
You'd figure they would come in and ask us for these resources themselves, right? Okay, thanks, Chair.
Chair.
Senator Richards.
Thank you. From an industry standpoint, economic development, growth, contribution to our GDP, where are we with that? What kind of numbers are we talking about?
So $120 million a year is our estimate to the state economy through general excise tax and those types of things, visitor dollars, because the companies and their people come here annually to have meetings and attend our annual conference. Right now, well, I think in 2023, the number was gross written premiums through all of our captives is north of $17 billion, probably closer to $20 now, $20 billion a year. And those companies, these captive companies that are here, have invested probably north of $2 billion in our Hawaii financial institutions.
Yes, we're looking to shore up our state finances. This seems like a potentially, I won't say low-hanging, but moderately hanging fruit. So thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Any other questions? I have a question for the Insurance Division. Thank you. Jerry, I guess, could you respond to the, I guess what's being said is, you know, the Insurance Division has access to the financials of all these captives on an ongoing basis. So, you know, things have been going well. I mean, are there examples of risk that you can cite to, to, you know, give us more cause for concern about moving in this direction?
Sure. So I'll touch on a few things. I did take some notes. You know, specifically, I think one of the questions asked was, do other states provide that? He's right. There are other states who don't have any requirement. There are some that just say that they may request an exam. Most of the top ones, like Vermont, Tennessee, Delaware, they all have a similar requirement to what we currently require. I think some of our concerns is in those, the details or lack of details in who would qualify. I understand they're trying to provide discretion to the commissioner. I did have a productive meeting earlier this week with HCIC representatives. I think we're willing to, you know, perhaps work through some of that. Just as the bill is currently worded, there is concern. Um, I'll mention, for example, uh turning in financial statements. Right now, we make, we make exemptions to certain entities that we feel are less at risk, that they don't have to do audited financial statements, they just give us attestations. And in fact, those entities might be more in line with us, you know, waiving their exam requirement because maybe they're in runoff or there's, there's a significant less risk. One of the other, I guess, parallels made was that we get, you know, we get notified of any business plan changes, any uh, you know, we get financial statements filed, whether they be audited or attest attestations. Um, that's what the company is reporting to us. We don't know if there's things that they're not reporting to us, and that's where, when we go in and do the examination on a five-year period, that's where we can identify. You know, we have found in the past, uh perhaps uh they instituted a new plan program and didn't put in the business plan amendment with us. And so that's a finding that we would find in the in the, in the audit. I guess another concern is, you know, it it does give a lot of the discretion to the commissioner, but if the commissioner then starts using that discretion, it could lead to a lot of confusion between the brokers, like, you know, excuse me, sort of fighting a cold here. Um, you know, why did you grant this, this company an exemption and this one you didn't? Um, so perhaps we would develop, you know, and we could develop internally sort of guidelines and rules that we could use to make that determination. But again, I guess there's just a concern. Uh, there is fifteen positions that are allocated currently. We're we're actually transferring in another uh position from our cable television division and DCCA into the captive area. Uh, he is correct. Uh, we have had difficulties filling those vacancies, finding qualified people who want to be captive examiners, usually with a financial background. Uh, we're currently, I believe, at twelve of the fifteen that we currently are authorized or filled. Uh, and so as we grow, we would look, you know, uh, we are open to perhaps exploring some sort of an exemption, but right now, as it's currently worded, uh I think we do have concerns.
Thank you. Senator.
So if this committee were to amend the measure to basically limit to to self-attestation companies, would that address some of your concerns there?
Hmm. I mean, there still may be concerns with some of those companies, right? You know, if if their financial condition gets uh, you, I don't know how many of them are that, are that. So I would have to talk to the captive administrator. Unfortunately, he couldn't attend today.
Well, you just said that you, there's self-attest anyway, that they're considered to be low-risk, and perhaps that should be the company, so what's wrong with?
That's my understanding, but again, I would, I would feel more comfortable before saying that if I could check with the captive administrator. And and again, that may not really meet the needs of of what the industry is asking for. Like, I'm not sure how many, how many companies currently we grant that uh, you know, requirement where they don't have to submit audited financials. So, I'm sorry, I I don't have a clear answer for you on that.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to the next measure, I believe is SB twelve twelve. Uh, relating to the Real Estate Commission, this measure requires at least two members of the Real Estate Commission to be licensed professional engineers or architects engaged in business in the state for three years immediately preceding the appointment. Uh Frank Schultz in support and Gregory Masekian with comments online.
Thank you, Chair. Again, I'm Greg Masekian. Um, I do have a concern, and I'll I'll make this simple. Um, I'm asking that somehow you please amend this bill to address concerns with conflict of interest. Um, what I'm seeing, and specifically, I'm seeing it with condominium bills, that there's some that testify that do wear many hats. So sometimes they get up and will speak as CAI representative, or sometimes um uh as an individual or for a real estate company that they own. But they're actually a real estate commissioner, and they also work for a management company. And you all know who I'm speaking of, I'm not gonna mention right now, but you all know who I'm speaking of, and it's a concern. And it's happening on a regular basis, including today, uh and it's a strong concern that I have. So I'd ask that this bill and any other bill, uh and actually looking and investigating this concern uh is addressed because this has been going on for far too long, and unfortunately, the voices of condominium owners are not being heard throughout Hawaii, but the voices of one or two people are regularly heard, and they have um obviously access to the table with our legislators. So thank you for addressing that concern. It's a longstanding one. Hala.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to testify on this measure? Okay, we'll move on. SB thirteen sixty-six is the next. Relating to interest on insurance proceeds related to a mortgage loan. This measure supports mortgage hours during disasters and other instances of damage to property by requiring licensed mortgage servicers and financial institutions to pay interest on insurance proceeds held for the benefit of consumers. It provides that a fee shall not be charged to the borrower in connection with the maintenance or dispersment of insurance proceeds received by the financial institution, and provides that the minimum interest rate paid on insurance proceeds be based on the national rate for money market accounts as determined by federal regulations. Uh, DCCA Division of Financial Institutions in support.
White Young Commissioner.
Good morning.
Institutions. Sorry.
Go ahead, we have you now.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we stand on our written testimony. Um, I'm available if you have additional questions.
Thank you very much. Mortgage Bankers Association of Hawaii is in opposition. Hawaii Bankers Association with comments.
Not available on Zoom, Chair.
Oh, we have her in the room. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair. My chair, Members of the Committee, Tefaniyajima with Hawaii Bankers Association. I'll be brief. Um, we, we stand on our written testimony with comments. We know that there's a House bill that's moving, um and we're working with the DFI um commissioner on language, so I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you very much. We also have the Hawaii Credit Union League with comments, offering late testimony. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Members, questions? Okay, we'll move to the last measure, SB thirteen sixty-seven relating to installment loans. Uh, this measure clarifies the intended scope of four eighty J HRS, which is the regulation of installment lenders, and that the law does not intend to eliminate the ability of lenders to make low-interest rate loans under existing interest and usury laws. It replaces the term consumer loan with the defined term installment loan for consistency throughout the statutes and requires loan maintenance fees to be prorated daily to prevent consumers from incurring fees once the loan is paid off. It also allows lenders to charge a convenience fee of up to five dollars for debit card payments, providing consumers more options for repayment. DCCA DFI in support online.
White Young Commissioner of Financial Institutions, we stand on your, we stand on our testimony. I'm here if you have questions.
Thank you. That's all the testimony we've received on this measure. Members, any questions for DFI? Okay, if not, we will recess for decision-making. Okay, welcome back. We're here for decision-making on this nine thirty AM Friday, February fourteenth, twenty twenty-five agenda in Conference Room two two nine, Hawaii State Senate Committee on Commerce and Consumer Protection. The first measure is SB eleven thirty-seven relating to insurance. The recommendation on this measure is to pass with amendments, adopting the insurance commissioner's proposed amendments, uh making technical non-substantive changes throughout the measure, and defecting the effective date of the bill to July one, twenty fifty. Members, any discussion?
No, no. Thank you, Chair, and I just want to thank the Insurance Division for their helpful comments on the measure.
Any other comments, questions? If not, passing with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Thank you. Vice Chair also votes aye. Senator McKelvey.
Yes.
Senator Richards.
Aye.
Senator Awah.
Aye.
Measure is adopted.
Thank you very much. The next measure is SB two nine three relating to real property transactions. Uh, as noted in the Realtors' testimony, uh this already is in place in the uh disclosures, so the recommendation is to defer. Uh, next measure is SB seven five two relating to insurance. The recommendation on this measure is to pass with amendments, will adopt the Attorney General's proposed changes, uh and defect the effective date of the measure to July one, twenty fifty. Any discussion? If there's none, uh Vice Chair passing with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Thank you. Of the members present, are there any voting with reservations or objections? Hearing none, measure is adopted.
Thank you. Uh, next measure is SB fifteen seventy-five relating to insurance. The recommendation is to pass this measure with a defective effective date of July one, twenty fifty. Any discussion? If not, passing with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Thank you. Of the members present, are there any voting with reservations or objections? Hearing none, measure is adopted.
Thank you very much. Next measure is SB ten forty-six relating to condominiums. Uh, members, I'm gonna recommend that we defer decision-making on this measure to Friday, February twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, at nine forty-five AM in this room, two two nine. I'd like to take a look at the, that comment from Mr. Masekian about ambiguity in the definitions. And we have some time before the decking deadline. The next measure is SB ten fifty relating to insurance. This is the captive insurance measure. Uh, members, my intention is to move this bill, uh but in order to foster some discussion between the parties, I'd like to defer decision-making on this measure till Friday, February twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, at nine forty-five AM in Conference Room two two nine, to see if we can make the changes here, and then uh then just have the House accept our awesome bill. Uh, the next measure is SB twelve twelve relating to the Real Estate Commission. Okay, so uh what we're gonna do on this bill, members, is uh pass with some amendments. We're gonna uh make some specific changes to the preamble to address, uh to better further clarify the point of this measure, which is that the Real Estate Commission needs to pay better attention to the condominium crisis, and that I have some real concerns about uh the lack of engagement, especially among the commission members, to escape the scope and severity of uh the crisis in the condominium market. This is uh one of their responsibilities, and although it might be a minority uh part of their, a minimal part of their workload, it is still part of their workload. And so the, you know, the objective of this measure was to ensure that there were members on this commission who have an understanding of the deferred maintenance concerns in the condom market right now and of uh the requirements of of, and we've heard other measures on on this as well, about what it takes to to actually take care of a, a vertical building, uh to ensure that uh these, these buildings are insurable in the moment, but also so that proper attention is being paid to so many of the problems that are coming before our committee right now because things aren't working right. Uh, so uh what I'd like to do is um pass with amendments, defect the date, the effective date to July one, twenty fifty. Add those clarifying remarks to the preamble, and just to make sure we're not eliminating real estate broker positions on the commission, we'll expand the size of the commission to eleven and create two new seats uh for these design professionals. Members, any discussion? Senator McKelvey.
Yeah, coming into this, I was a little confused, but I thank you for the clarity. Love the changes that you're making to this measure. Look forward to supporting this a hundred percent. Thank you again.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? If not, Vice Chair passing with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Thank you. Of the members present, any voting with reservations or objections? Hearing none, measure is adopted.
Thank you very much. Next measure is SB thirteen sixty-six related to interest on insurance proceeds related to a mortgage loan. Recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopting the DCCA's proposed amendments, making technical non-substantive changes throughout the measure, and defecting the effective date to July one, twenty fifty. Any discussion? If not, Vice Chair passing with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Of the members present, are there any objections or reservations? Hearing none, measure is adopted.
Thank you very much. The last measure on the agenda is SB thirteen sixty-seven relating to installment loans. Excuse me. The recommendation on this measure is to pass with amendments, adopting the proposed changes by the DCCA, making technical non-substantive changes throughout the measure, and defecting the effective date to July one, twenty fifty. Any discussion, members? If seeing none, passing with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Thank you. Of the members present, any voting with reservations or objections? Hearing none, measure is adopted.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.